First thing we have on the agenda is Philip Fairchild to address council. Is Philip here? Go ahead.
Hi, Gary.
Yep.
So my name's Philip Fairchild. I know some of you. I was actually offered a job here years ago when I was working law enforcement. And I've been taking another position, so never got the chance to actually fully work here. The question I had was, is, I remember when I moved here back in January, there was talks of actually, everybody, you know, getting a new pool. I was watching the guys' meeting on the eighteenth. That's when I recently found out that you guys actually had chosen to go with a splash pad instead of actually getting a pool. I wanted to know, what was that reasoning? How that reason came about? And how did you guys actually end up tearing out the pool without actually having the funds to be there when you're relying on the hospital?
Let's see, a little bit of it. The pool, we could, I had so many leaks on, we could get anyone come to repair it. Even the company that initially installed it, our part, individuals like Gary and Val were actually going underwater and patching the pool the last year. And we determined at that point, we weren't going to reopen it, possibly a new liner or a new pool maybe. The money, the reason why a splash pad was picked over the two projects was because there was a funding that was raised by Hicksville Community Fund. They raised eight hundred thousand dollars for a splash pad only, wasn't for a pool.
Majority of the community, because I moved here after moving away for a couple of years. And then I moved here in the January of last year. And I can tell you that everybody I've spoken to, everybody, the words that came out was, hey, we're getting a new pool and a splash pad. There may have been a lot of misconception there, but majority of the community, if not almost everybody who actually lives here, was knowing that they're like, hey, we're actually going to get a new pool. The splash pad was like secondary. And so that's, I've gone around, I've asked everybody, you know, like, everybody I talked to, that's how I ended up finding out. They're like, hey, we're actually going to get a new pool. And so that was the actual belief of almost everybody I've actually met.
I remember a sign show like in the park and up next to Subway.
And the mayor himself actually ended up saying in an interview once, not Mr. Barth now.
Mr. Jones.
But he actually said it himself with like the Crescent News, where he was actually, yeah, we've actually raised money for a pool and a splash pad. That was written in the article, that's what he said himself. And so like, I know that was.
We never raised any money for a pool. We, we didn't raise any money for the splash pad, the community, I mean, the Hicksville Community Fund did. And so they had money to put towards the splash pad. We looked at possibly doing an aquatic center and having a pool also. But when the budgetary numbers went out for bid, it was too high on the first bid, and then they rebid it. And the numbers were still higher than what council, majority of council wanted to do when it come to putting a pool in. But the money was already raised for a splash pad, so we had voted to move forward with the splash pad only and not a pool at this time.
And then why?
We do have the plans for the pool, and we do have two grants that are out there. If we get one of those grants, hopefully it'll become a reality in the next year or two.
Yeah.
So it's not completely gone. We had to tear the pool out because it was put in the fifties, the concrete underneath was crumbling.
Yeah.
So it became a safety hazard, and it had to be demolished. So we had to demolish it whether or not we were going to get a new pool. We're still working towards a new pool, but you'll just have to be patient.
Because like I know, when I was speaking with some members here, there were, you guys talked about how there was something about ten thousand dollars where you guys had to three times a year replace the line. You had to go in there because the concrete was going bad, and it cost you guys about thirty thousand dollars to replace the line. And then that's what I'm, after, you know, speaking with some, I knew that's what you guys already had to do. So then, that pool actually was able to continue on for another year or two. I mean, that's, how did you guys end up coming up with the idea of, hey, let's demolish it now, and then possibly get a grant to fix it later? The reason why I'm actually frustrated about it was because the kids in this area, everybody relied on that. Over the summer, the kids, they have nothing to do in this area. There's absolutely almost nothing. You gotta park, or you have to drive. They can walk around, they may be able to play some basketball, but that's about it. I have three kids myself, between nine, seven, and four, and a splash pad is almost useless. I've taken multiple splash pads. They get about twenty, twenty minutes of use, and then they're done. But that pool, everybody spent all summer there. They would spend almost night and day at that pool. And then you guys, one of the biggest, biggest reason that I've actually heard from at least the council is, hey, we took the pool out, and we planned on putting a new one in, but Hicksville, the hospital, they ended up closing. And I was told that you guys are blindsided by that, which I know is not the truth. I lived almost a thousand miles away, and about two years ago myself, I knew the actual issue was I was already going on with that hospital. There was just rumors that I was even told almost a thousand miles away. When I moved back here in January, anybody who actually went to the hospital, I heard multiple nurses and doctor staff talking about it. Then you guys had the urgent care. The urgent care was awesome. But then even the urgent care doctor who worked, she herself said, hey, I'm getting out of here because this hospital is probably going to go under. There's a lot of money that was missing. They didn't know what was going on. And that place, I believe, closed in, I want to say it was about April. But even before that, she put her notice in. So right away, almost as soon as I moved here in January, I knew that this hospital was having issues. I instantly started going to the hospital, and then they talked about it. So if this city council didn't know when, even in about April, the urgent care doctor left, that's impossible for you guys not to know because she said it.
Let me ask you a question. Where are we going with this?
I'm wanting to know how you guys are going to actually get the pool in, and how if there's a way to actually take the Hicksville, Hicksville Community Funds and just actually get a pool, or where's the pool fund at?
Hicksville Community Funds, that's, that's a splash pad only. That was all raised by other people. The village has nothing to do with it except for the fact that it goes in our park. Thirty years ago, I was in the construction business, and I had to take and set my hoe and stuff down inside of that pool and dig it up. These are the pictures of it. Thirty years ago, that pool was junk.
And I know the pool was junk.
And, and we had an opportunity to get it removed at a decent fee, and we acted on it because it was junk, and it needed pipework underneath the concrete. The concrete was crumbling. Thirty years ago, I didn't even have to saw cut it, I just dug through it. It's junk, and it's gone, so we can't bring it back. So now what we have to do is wait until the financing and everything gets around and gets, so that all the, all the moons are in order, and we'll put a pool in probably. But what you're saying about, I heard this and I heard that, and I was a thousand miles away, completely immaterial. We can't change what we've done.
And that's what I wanted to know, what is the possibility of actually having the funds available to get the pool put in?
Like you said, there's a couple of grants we applied for, and they're million dollar, multimillion dollar grants, one's about two million.
Yeah.
And that's a big basis. I mean, if we got that, awarded that grant, I think there'd be a lot of council members in favor of moving forward. But funding wise right now, there's, I've been on the finance committee for seven, eight years now, and to me, I could not vote for a pool.
Yeah, interest rates started when all this was around the three to four, now it's up to seven. It was a two million dollar loan. We didn't want to borrow the money at this time because of the amount of money that we caught, was going to cost the village. We had to pass an EMS levy because that was more vital. So you're just gonna have to be patient. We're working towards it.
And then what was the possi- So then why did you actually choose, like, was there actually a way to actually apply for this grant before you even took out the pool? Because I know the pool is junk, and I get that.
Right.
But then what was the possibility of that? Because, and how long does usually take to get these grants?
Just depends on the cycles. I'm not familiar with the grant deadlines or anything like that. I just said, you just have to be patient.
We won't hear anything until at least June first of this year.
Okay, then what are you guys doing with the pool funds then, that you use every year? Are you saving that for positively, being able to invest, or are you taking the pool funds?
We have them going to capital projects.
All right. Richard Fox to address council. Is Richard Fox here?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Approval of the March eighteenth regular council meeting minutes?
I think we should approve Ezra.
One second. Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Assett?
Yes.
Eglin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Approval of the bills. Anybody have questions about the bills?
Sorry, I don't understand, but I got them done yesterday.
Annual fee of the treasurer, what's that for? Can I add? The third one on the back page.
That is for the volunteer firefighter dependent fund.
Corey, on that forty-three, thirty-three, skid steer tracks. I questioned Bill last time, that was skid steer tracks. What's this one for?
We didn't have any tracks on the last one. This, this one's for the street department, skid steer. Replaced the tracks on that, about four thousand dollars. Wasn't the, the other one you questioned, was the one on the gear or something for a snowplow, wasn't it?
No, that was PTO, but that was a different thing.
We had tracks gone last year on wastewater, skid steer.
Well, you had on tracks too?
Yeah. Yeah, the tracks that were on this one were, they were original ones from twenty fifteen, when it was new. There was a true land bill for that skid steer for, I don't remember what the sensor was, there was an electrical issue going on with it.
Something was expensive, I don't remember. Okay. I'll move to pay the bills.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Eglin?
Yes.
Assett?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beverly?
Uh, yes.
There's a public hearing for comments or objections to zoning change for seven oh one Spencer Road Street from Harfle Four Residential to R eight Residential. Is that in the packet with the date and time?
It's tonight.
Tonight?
If anyone has any objections to that, they can speak now.
Uh, Merrick, can I ask Bruce a question here? Bruce, on here is engine five oh three and tower five oh one hydraulic leaks, first response, four hundred and five dollars. Is, are the leaks fixed on that power truck?
No, that wasn't for the, that was just to work on free and getting the packing put in. The leaks are still there.
Why did we mention power five oh one hydraulic leaks?
I don't know.
Did you, I understand you got that truck back?
I got four back, yes.
What was the bill on that?
I don't, he didn't have it invoiced for me.
You scared me.
Have we taken that ladder truck out to Mike Myers?
We can.
Well, that was said about two months ago.
Four council meetings ago. Yeah, true. Okay, go ahead there. Thank you.
So are there any objections or comments regarding the zoning change for seven oh one Spencer Road Street?
Can I ask what's that sold to?
Honestly, I don't have it in front of me.
That was when they had last time, I was for the area right back there, right about where the S curve is.
Right, it's a house on the.
Or what Coon put in there, or Justin did.
Yeah, but what's that?
R A. Mold, mold, mold I, I don't have that one for me either. I think it's from one to four family or something like mold.
Oh, yeah.
It's for that empty lot.
So do we need to vote on it then? No, okay. Uh, there's no boards or commissions minutes submitted, no council committee reports submitted. Does anybody have a meeting that they want to do oral minutes on that hasn't turned them in yet? Okay. Administrator's report, no report?
I have some stuff here. I wasn't able to get it around, I was out of town. Still trying to get a concrete contractor to come work with us on some sidewalks. I've had a tough, tough go of it. We do have a curb that got broken at West High Street. And we'll drive from an accident that involved a flatbed truck and a, that was hauling big slabs of granite that lost their load there and busted up that brand new curb that the state put in across from hometown. So we're looking at getting that replaced. It's the last piece that we need in order to fill out the bill to invoice the trucking company. When it comes to the sidewalk, so far we've had three individuals reach out concerning their work on their sidewalks that were done. Jared and I have been out, we've looked at two out of the three residents there. They're gonna need a lot of work. We'll just say twenty percent of one of them was actually marked. One of them had two panels done, but he technically needs like twenty-three panels done on him down here at three hundred South Main Street. The street department did go out to two hundred South Main Street, which was the older gentleman that come in. They went ahead and back, filled along his sidewalk there, and filled in the ruts and everything in his yard. He was A-OK with that. We are still waiting for people to reach out to us concerning their sidewalks. We did find out that thirty letters were sent out at the end of August of twenty twenty-three to people regarding their sidewalks. Jared and I went to, I don't know, six or seven of those addresses, and some of them had one or two panels in the, in the letter. But there was multiple panels on each property, so we went ahead and typed up a letter. Jared had sent out to all thirty of those addresses to basically disregard the letter they received in August of twenty twenty-three. New letters will actually go back out in May of twenty twenty-five. Instead of August to August every year, we're gonna do May to May, so there's a little more leeway in case we need to assess the taxes, which all that has to be in by the end of August. So thirty days is real tough to get a contractor and get the work done, get the bills out, so.
Since we're on the sidewalk, there is a question.
I have a question, Corey.
Yeah.
I thought we decided at the last meeting that everybody that had sidewalks replaced in this last round, you guys were just gonna come out and check, that I wasn't responsible for reaching out to you, saying I need you to come look at the work that was done. Did I misunderstand from the last meeting?
Well, I had checked the meeting minutes and what was voted on. What was voted on is different than what was said. Voted on, people have until April fifteenth at four P M. to reach out to us. Which is, I mean, if you want to make this your official complaint, then yes, we'll, we'll check it out.
I guess a hundred percent. I walked away from the last meeting with the understanding that everybody that had them done, you guys were just gonna come out and check because you were supposed to check them before we paid the guy that did the work the last time. Did I misunderstand wrong?
I think so.
No, I did hear that verbally, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's what was verbally said at the meeting.
Yeah.
But when you go back on the minutes.
So I mean, can I even ask who's gonna, I mean, simple, we're gonna go around and check all the properties and.
But, but what we voted on was April fifteenth at five, four P M. for people to reach out.
But how would anyone know that if they weren't here, if you weren't reaching out to them at all? Then how would they know what the rule was for that?
That's what was read off for the options.
Right, but how?
If they weren't here and no one said anything, how would they even know that any of this has gone on?
Well, I thought we were going back and checking all of the work.
Thank you, that's what I thought.
Regardless of that impression.
That's not what we voted on.
Okay.
I mean, if we, if we wanted, I'll go either route, that makes me no difference.
I prefer you. I mean, I don't know, I don't speak for these two.
We got, we got the whole summer to get it corrected, so.
Yeah, I would prefer, I mean, we gotta be on it.
Yeah, just because you were gonna check ours at the same time.
Then we're back to where we were right before.
Check dips and all that. But I went back and like I said, I checked the minutes and how everything was voted, and that's, that's what was voted, was April fifteenth at four o'clock.
Thank you. I think if you're gonna go on what's voted on, you might want to put some communication out there because not everybody comes to these and not everybody watches them on YouTube.
When the minutes aren't completely everything that was said the entire.
And I think when you said voted on, I want to say that's what was in the sidewalk committee minutes. When they get the options and it's set on there about April fifteenth for the residents to say something to bill administrator. But I remember verbally being said during the meeting that they were gonna go around checks.
I interpret it as two different things.
There was a recommendation, I didn't think what was actually agreed on, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because they were gonna have to go back around and measure all the cement and stuff to make, to use the bills, so. We have to review those.
Good, thank you.
What else have I got here? Uh, this Wednesday, I will be meeting with Mandy Wyman out to the school. There's approximately thirty seniors that are looking to get some community service hours in, and it's not because they're in trouble. It's, it's, I think it's a new program that they're doing with the seniors in order to give back to the community. So there is a few projects that I'm gonna talk to her about and see if we can get some seniors to.
Seniors as in people like me, or seniors like high school guys?
Neither or.
Okay.
You should trade them on how to put sidewalks in.
This Thursday, we got a meeting at the commissioner's office regarding the six water main valves that are gonna be replaced this summer in the village. I did receive three estimates for that work, and that's what we will be discussing in the picking up contractor on Thursday. Over the past couple of weeks, I interviewed five different individuals for the general labor position. And I would like to recommend Cody Burlingame for the position. Cody Lazor and Sherwood, or Ederton, I'm sorry, I meant Ederton. Are we hiring Josh Walden?
I need a first and second.
I just first it did.
I'll second.
Roll call.
He's Mike's boy, isn't he?
Yep.
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Eglin?
Yes.
Assett?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beverly?
Can't have making fees.
Yes.
So pending dragon physical, Bill?
Yes.
Anything else, Corey?
No.
Could you forward those to everybody? Thank you.
I got a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
What'd you find out with Sixmo at your meeting?
I think back now, it's been a few days. Most of it is on the village. I know Eric did a lot of talking with Patrick. Most of it will come back on to the village. I don't exactly remember word for word what Patrick had said unless Eric remembers exactly.
The biggest thing I got out of it was the way that they put out the bid. I know the emails I sent back in August of last year said first option should have been, first, first bid was the splash pad only. And then to operate the splash pad, the second bid should have been pool only, and the third bid combined both of them. But the way they had it worked in the contractor, when they put it out for bid, was phase one, the pool. Phase two, the splash pad. Phase three was pretty much doing both of them. And so the contractors and them assumed that phase one was getting done, which was a pool. And phase two was, possibility was a splash pad. And that's what they kept coming back on.
Yeah, one thing I took from the meeting that they're gonna look real hard at trying to do some value engineering. So they're gonna see if they can do away with, if they're able to do away with a storm, which is forty thousand.
Because, yeah.
They'd send out a surveyor from their group, so that'll save us, I mean, fifteen hundred bucks, but they basically seemingly admitted fault that they should have bid it, they should have had it different, the way I took it. Because he said everything that they're gonna do moving forward is not gonna be, we're not gonna be charged for.
And it was just Patrick called me, it wasn't all the other ones that have been in all the meetings, you know, with Chris Blue and all them from Sixmo, it was just him by himself. And he said he was gonna have to go back and talk to his team and set up another meeting. I haven't seen a day or a time for that other meeting.
And Caldwell will get the altitude valve deal worked out, the new tower?
Yeah, altitude, altitude valve is good. We still have the two leaks. They still haven't been out.
Four and a half years getting this tower operating, like this seems a bit much.
Four and a half years to get it operating?
Yes. Because I did the grant on it. And here it is, twenty twenty-four, still.
All right, anything else on that? All right, solicitor's report.
We have the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh eight by caption only to amend appropriations. Um, and we have the second reading of resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh seven by caption only authorizing the sale of unneeded obsolete or unfit village personal property, including by internet auction for the calendar year twenty twenty-four. And then a second reading of resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh eight by caption only to donate two sets of wheat churro to the mat gym that are not needed for public use and have no value.
Thanks, Rachel.
Who need to, you get that as the last reading? No?
No emergencies and no voting. Move on to department heads. Chief K?
Uh, you should have received, well, maybe, okay, you guys got it, forgot. Chief reports, uh, an update on our, the Marx Tower. It was supposed to have been turned on, uh, last Monday. It still has not been turned on. We are having some difficulty with the company that's supposed to turn it on. I took the sheriff to make some phone calls to Buckeye State Sheriff's Association to even get to the point where they gave us a date that they were supposed to turn it on. And it still hasn't been done, so they were working on that today to find out what's going on. We're, we're getting a runaround basically with the company, so, and then. I think I have the majority of what I had. K nine's doing well in training. I think that's, that's all I've got.
How long was the training for that?
Fourteen weeks.
And how many weeks are we in then?
Four, five, May twenty, last week in May, whatever that variety is, I believe, is the graduation date.
Third first?
Yeah.
Twenty fourth?
Twenty fourth, I think. It's supposed to be graduation date for the.
Any questions for the chief? Yes, chief? Chief Hart?
Careful now.
Again, five more quarters back here, pumping running, haven't had it out, pump any water just to make sure that it's here.
That's all I got.
Recommend getting that ladder truck out to Myers. All right.
Call him first.
Well, first full day was the day, or is the day, so, uh, not much as far as that, as far as that goes. Do have a couple of things. First of all, we will be doing canine training on how to treat the canine if something should happen. So the state of Ohio recognizes canines as legitimate police officers, and we actually have protocols for canines, so we will actually be doing some stuff with the vets, so, and we are.
When are you gonna do that?
Whenever I can get a chance to get with a vet and a vet gives me a, a good solid date. We're, we're, we're gonna be working with Auburn.
Animal care?
Yeah, that's, that's where we, yeah, that's where I take my, my dog and.
Tiger, pet mirror or doctor?
Yep. So, um, May fourth, we will be doing another training next door. So, and this will be on pediatric trauma, if anybody would like to join in.
That's open to the public?
Well, I mean, it's open to you guys, if you guys wanna come in.
May fourth, at what time do you have a?
Nine o'clock.
Nine A.M.?
Nine A.M. Last time we ended up with a bunch of Amish cookies and, and breads and stuff like that, so, you know, and, and stuff like. I do have somebody I would like to recommend tonight. Her name is Chloe Whitman. She will be, she is a basic EMT. She comes to us from Edgerton. She works part-time at Williams County EMS. She will be working part-time here, running overnight, preferably three days a week. She currently, like I said, would be doing here, part-time at Williams County and she also coaches hockey for, up in Michigan. So I would like to recommend her as a new part-time employee.
And she's already certified?
She's already certified.
Okay. That's the first, do I have a second?
So, so you said part-time overnights, you're, you're talking like during the week?
Yeah, yeah, during the week.
So we'll have two people in here at nighttime?
We'll, we'll have coverage at night, yes. We won't have two people in, in house at night, we'll have one so far, but I'm still, so, one of the things that you guys kinda gave me the directive on was results, not excuses. I've got three paramedics, two advanced and another two basics ready to go. You just gotta tell me when.
Nobody knows the operation better than you, I would think you should tell us.
Well, but the problem is, and I, and, the problem is, is we gotta find the funding for it, you know? I, I mean, I can bring you all the people, I can bring you people, but we gotta find the funding, you know, that's, that's the problem.
That was, that was the only reason why I asked for it, because budget-wise, we never really had where we pay people overnights and this would be adding more salary.
Well, that was, that was part of the, that was part of the part-time that we, that you guys had agreed to, you know?
I, I thought the part-time position was eliminating overtime on weekends and stuff like that.
Well, we're trying to, we're trying to eliminate the, the, the overtime at nights, at, at, at night. Right now, on the weekends, so it's typically myself and whoever else, I know Drew, who's in advanced and Derek, if he's available, they'll run, you know, twelve-hour shifts, you know, Saturday and Sunday, so that way that eliminates some overtime.
Are they just, they run from home or they run from, actually at the station?
This, they're at station, they're at station. So I'm doing everything I can to eliminate that overtime, but, you know, unfortunately it is what it is at this point.
Yeah, I think the important thing is baby steps towards getting, because overtime was significant for the four full times, correct? Me if I'm wrong?
Yeah.
So this should help with that, correct?
Right.
Well, wasn't it before whoever was on call like weekends and let's say, I'm not sure about overnight, but weekends, wasn't it, they got a dollar an hour for being on call and they work from, they ran from home? I mean, they got called from home and they came in, they got the squad and then went out.
Right. But.
This would be paying the full salary, not an hour an hour.
Right, right.
Because they're on site.
Right.
The full wage.
The full wage, yeah. And I, I mean, I, I know where you're going with it.
I'm just thinking money-wise.
I, you know, and, and trust me, I, I under.
We did, we did love you to generate money and if we keep, I mean, I, I know we need more people, but I don't see how this is, you know, hire somebody to work three nights a week, you know, one person in the station paying the full salary, how that's gonna help with the budget, I guess.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, I, I do. But at some point, and like I said last time, when does the financial cost or when does the human cost finally outweigh the financial cost? Because you've got, you, you've got four people over there and I'm, I'm not gonna include myself, but you had four people over there that ran six hundred calls last year. Nobody, and I mean nobody in this, in this area would do that. Not the four people. Just won't happen. So, I mean, I, I mean, if anybody wants to, if anybody wants an application, I'll give you an application, you know? We, I did talk to the state last week about nurses, so we're, that's not dead in the water by any means, so.
Could, could finance sit down with Cheryl and try to figure out where we could pull some money from?
Well, I love you that we did, I mean, that's pretty much maxed out what we could ask for, that was more than what the algorithm thought we should even ask, I mean.
You already voted to add two part-timers that positions are not filled yet, so Chloe will be one of them.
Right.
I voted no for that because I wanted to know about how it was covered for overtime and stuff because that was the.
So we could still take on one more.
Yeah, and, 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 and I, trust me, I, before I bring anything to you, I go to her, okay? I talk, I talk to Cheryl on a daily basis when I'm here. Trust me.
Poor Cheryl.
Yeah, yeah, I, I do, I, 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 I talk to her daily. And it's, it may not even be about personnel, I mean, hey, can I buy this? We need this, can I get it? If, if she says no, then we don't.
That's why you didn't call me, you doesn't have to come up with your mouth.
But I get my stuffs in that way, so.
I thought you liked visitors.
But, no, so, so, yeah, I, I would like to get, put Chloe on, pending physical and obstruction, obviously.
There's many hours that she's gotten fired, she, she just can't be giving us that much, that many hours.
So she's, we had talked about, we had, that was one of the things that we had brought up, look, the person that we're bringing on, we need to say, okay, we need to stay under that twenty-nine hours. If we keep her, if we keep her at three, three nights per week, that puts her at twenty-four and she, she is a hundred percent agreed to that.
She's good with that.
Yeah.
And she's already certified, so.
And she's already certified.
We're not paying that to get her certified.
And, and that's, that's the other thing about the, the other people that I, that I have, all but, I've got one paramedic that's here in the state of Ohio and the rest of them are from Indiana, so, I mean, it's just a matter of, the, the people are, the people are willing, it's just now.
No money.
Yeah, exactly, you know? I, I, we did, we did apply for two grants over the past week. Cheryl and I worked on the one and then I applied for what we call the hardship grant and that gives us up to thirty thousand dollars for equipment. I know the mayor was talking to a representative about trying to get funding for, from the feds for trying to hire some additional people, you know? Over the weekend, we were on diversion again. At one o'clock this morning, I made, made trek over to Auburn, you know, with a patient, so, you know.
You're on diversion now, aren't you?
Not right now, not at this, not at this moment, I mean, I haven't checked my email.
Oh, I just, because the last one went to Brian, I just assumed.
Well, the last one went to Brian because of.
They wanted to.
No.
No?
Because that was my decision because of what he was presenting.
Oh, okay.
So.
Don't need to get into specifics.
One more quick question, so if you, if you fill the other part-time, what hours would you be looking for that person to be working at?
I would really like that person to, I would like that person to be able to work weekends, you know, where we can, where we can drop, drop somebody, you know, or drop the need for somebody to pick up, you know, that, even that dollar an hour. I know it's not much, but I would like, like them to do the weekends. If they say, hey, I can only do overnights, well, that, that just eliminates our overnight issues. I mean, for three out of four, for three out of seven.
When you have them work the same night as, like, let's say Chloe, or when you have them work the other nights that.
I, I, well, if I could, if I could have them work the same nights, I would have them work the same nights, but, you know, if they say, well, I can, I can work these nights, then I'll have them work those nights. I mean, you know, if, if, at this point, it's strategic scheduling to try to mitigate overtime and, and, you know, those, those other things that you got going on.
Yeah, I would say everything you get on paper to present would be helpful with us.
So that, that, that brings me to this, I'd like to do a P.O.B. meeting soon, like within the next week or so. And last but not least, the mayor and I were talking and that's a dangerous thing. I am going to personally invite you guys after the next council meeting next door because I don't know as if you guys know what our equipment or how much it costs. I think that's something that you guys ought to see. Because when I, I can stand up here and say, something cost me forty-five thousand dollars and you're like, what? I want you to see it. So after the next council meeting, that's my personal invitation.
Thank you, chief.
And what about Chloe?
Oh, we need a roll call.
Okay. Nasset?
No.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Miller?
Yes.
Egling?
Yes.
All right.
Hey, Gregory?
Park director. Getting everything opened up, ready to go?
Ball games are starting.
Fiscal officer's report.
Fund status and catch summary, I can't complain about right now. I added in a purchase order listing with a notation that that's where you need to see what's going on, not after the fact. So if you like that, I can put it in more often. It doesn't change daily, so once a month it'll probably be in that revolving loan collection report. And in conjunction utility, did not get done today, only the first, so that will be next one, sorry. Yeah, any questions?
Do you guys like the purchase order listing? Yes?
Yes.
Yes? Yes.
Yeah, I tried to get as much detail as I could on it because we have one, but it would be the odd pages, but at least it was an idea of what money we're holding on to for.
Couple of them gonna come in and ask you about tomorrow.
Okay.
I've got nothing on the mayor's report, Mayor Barth didn't leave me anything, but is there anything else that needs to be brought before this council from the general public?
Welcome our new zoning guy on board.
Make most tooters.
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
Miller?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Yes.
One or two people together.